Good evening and thank you for joining the city council special meeting for today, April 3rd. I would ask that the clerk take roll call. Yes, you sound like I was spreading them. So now let's go back. Okay, I was trying to give our city attorney some time to get in here. Okay, so now, roll call please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Kenez. Councilmember Miller. Madam Mayor, you have a prayer.
Thank you, and I invite everyone that's in the audience and on Zoom to participate in this pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, we go approval of the agenda please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second, is there any discussions? Roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Kenez.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the public comments from items on the agenda as speakers decide to move to the podium or raise your hand in the audience. And speakers are limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to be heard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think we all agree that goal setting is important. I suggest that we have a goal survey from the residents at the Thursday town hall meetings to work in front of the residents to be goals.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have an email from a resident.
So we'll wait to public for our city council.
No, they're just before the, before the.
Oh, okay.
It's not brought on the agenda.
If that's the one that got reached today, yeah, I will respond to them.
So that wasn't responding to.
Pardon me? Because it was sent to me, it says since they had the first one and they had you all included and how we always have discussed.
Oh, it was sent to each of us.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll be responding to.
I know, but this is in reference to this item that's coming out on the agenda.
Okay, but we're, I, it is a correspondence that was actually sent to the mayor and how we've always been doing it is that I've been responding to it via email. I've been responding to them. So is the, if it's from.
So he should have, he should have submitted it.
He submitted it through public.
Public comment?
Yes. Anyone else?
Sorry, Teddy.
Well, it's a public comments. Next, we'll go into the actual request for consideration or approval. Up first is the Lather Village AMI proposal.
Okay. This is for the automated meter infrastructure. Technology and the water system technology to allow for. The ability to have daily reads, instant reads. It helps not only reduce the amount of time that staff has to spend driving by to do this, but it also helps to pinpoint if there are any water leaks. If we notice spikes in customer use, so it is very customer friendly and customer oriented. It is something that we can bring a report to council every month so that you can see. Those things that are noticed that if we do have something that we notice a spike in use. And it's outside of the normal use, we can contact that person. That resident will let them know that something's going on in their house. There's a process of questions that we would ask. Can you look at your meter to determine if it is spinning? That tells us that your water meter is not working correctly. Do you have toilets that might be running, a water heater that might be going bad? A faucet on somewhere that you forgot about? Any of those types of things that that lead to higher use. It could be a leak in a pipe. I know the house that we live in, the copper pipes have started getting little spring holes in them and. And you don't notice that because it's behind the drywall, so. We've had higher water uses. It's not something that you would notice right away, but this would help us to be able to. Help the residents see that maybe they need to have a plumber come in and help identify where the issue might be. It's not just staff related, but it does to reduce. The amount of staff time. It would free up DPW to be able to go out and do other projects. That they're not able to get to on those days because they're doing the drive by testing to get the water meter read. So this is something that has come before you, the proposal is for a hundred, twenty thousand four hundred three dollars and twenty nine cents. There are some additional things on there such as a customer portal, you know, one time setup, but those things. They're not quite there yet. They're still testing that and getting that in place. So in the future, it's something that we could add on and then residents could have a port on their phone that they can track their own water usage. Once that that system is tested a hundred percent. They're ready to get that up and going probably in June, maybe July. But their recommendation, they just put the numbers in there so that we were aware of what that was. But would be to hold off until they've got the, the testing, the beta version all taken care of and it's fully in place and, and working. So this is the proposal that is before you. It does not require going into residents' homes. It is something that our antennas that are placed on our existing. Towers that we have. And once the two antenna are installed on our existing towers, it will then be determined if we need to add another mast arm and antenna. The cost of the third antenna is in the price. The cost of the mast is not, so that is something that, you know, if we have to do that, that would be an additional price to. To figure out in the future, but for right now, that should be able to get us upwards of eighty five percent.
Well, more than likely, well, I'll, we'll submit the motion if I can comment.
Okay, yeah. Accuracy. And as far as estimating water bills. We do have a list of people that are estimated right now. That would be something that would be able to help us pinpoint why those reads aren't picking up. And really zero in to target those to get them either the meter isn't working properly, something went wrong, maybe the. The technology that says signal out is not working correctly. It, it would help us in the long run as far as that goes too. So that is the proposal that is before you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to waive the bidding process because Ferguson Water, Ferguson Water Works is the sole source provider of Neptune water meters and approved the Lather Village AMI proposal in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and three dollars and twenty nine cents.
Second. It's been moved to second. Is there a discussion? Hearing them?
Oh, no, go ahead. Yeah, I do too. I do see annual fees. Some were left on and some were knocked off. Which ones are, which annual fees will be the ones the city would be responsible for?
The ones that are in red are the ones that are for the consumer portals that I talked about that they're not quite ready, so that is not part of the fee. If we choose to do that, the additional prices of the My Single Sign On, which is down below. Is six, six thousand two hundred fifty dollars and then the annual support is nineteen hundred dollars. And if you do purchase the, the My Three Sixty Single Sign On, the consumer portal type of stuff, then. That would be something that would be an additional fee going forward.
Yeah, that's all for the consumer portal, which we're not getting. We've had at this point.
So there's going to be a one time setup fee if you do it, but so, and the consumer portal is where the. Resident can look at it, so we're not doing that.
So the annual fee is the very top one up there. That's the eight thousand ninety one dollars and ninety cents. That is the annual fee.
And we're locked into that price forever?
It's an annual fee. It's an annual fee. Yeah.
And the warranty on it.
I don't have that information.
You know, who has it?
Just. I think. And you answered that monthly reports. You would bring those to us and, oh, and who, you guys will be monitoring it daily, day to day?
Yeah, daily, we would have a report that would be generated in-house. It's something that your system can be set to be able to generate that for you every day. So that's the first thing it does. You can set it to whatever time. Or typically, that's how this is done. I want to say Owasso has Neptune meters as well, and that's how their program ran. So you're able to generate that report. It will quickly highlight, you know, you have high usage at these locations. So it's not something that you have to go through one thousand nine hundred ninety eight names like we currently have to do and physically look at every location where there's a meter. It would pull that, it extracts that information out for us and maybe you've got twenty meters that day that you see a spike in use or thirty meters and it would have that list for you. So you'd be able to identify that.
Plus, you'd also have the, the additional ability to, in response to customer requests and customer questions, to get on the system and very quickly. Address, you know, the issues that they have quicker than we have now because you'll be able to get almost real time data.
Would this allow us to go back to quarterly billing or would you stay at monthly?
That's a future discussion. I think it would allow us to do any type of billing that you would please. I know cost wise, it's something to talk with council about going forward. It costs money every single month to build to have this done. My recommendation would be to do a quarterly billing because that reduces that cost significantly. But it also stretches the revenue that comes into the city out in a longer interval. However, you have a higher amount that comes in every quarter. So it would just be getting into that flow to do that. So I've seen it done both ways, quarterly, bimonthly or monthly.
Right, but this system wouldn't affect that decision. It would be completely separate.
But I'm, I'm thinking the part of the reason for this was because we were having issues with loss and.
Right, and at that point in time, the only way that you could determine that was every month.
Exactly.
So now this would allow us to pull those reads every single day. It has that report that comes out to tell us. If there are high usage, so it would be very easy to go back to quarterly billing and that's what council shows.
Okay, I can answer my questions.
Yeah, some, some additional things just to mention. I feel like I'm so loud.
Karen was actually.
That's okay.
Oh, you can go. I didn't want to stop you.
This, this proposal is somewhat ambiguous. I would like to know what the return on the investment is. This is a very large expenditure. It says we'll significantly reduce costs. Reduce cost of what? By how much? Provide better customer service. What does that look like? How will that be measured? Faster billing, improved cash flow. What's the benefits of faster billing? Near real time tracking of adverse water events. Right now, and, and who will be monitoring that? Because we have a system. Right now, we have had over million dollar water loss since starting two, twenty seventeen. And last January, I went into BSA online and could see that Michigan First and the high school, that there was a major issue with those two accounts. So we did have the capacity to be able to do that with two of our largest. Accounts and that, that wasn't done. So I'm, I'm wondering, you know, who's going to, who's going to be, be watching it? I also, the infrastructure committee received a recommendation from Giffords Webster in twenty nineteen. To replace fifteen thousand five hundred seventy feet of water main as soon as possible. That hasn't happened. It's only been a little over three thousand feet. And so, no, it is not since not, okay, Susan, not since the, not since the capital improvement. And in two thousand nineteen, that was what Scott Ringer had put out, so. Since, since our capital improvement bond, there's been a little over three thousand feet, which still leaves a lot. So I just don't believe that we have the funds to spend on technology. Yes, it would be great if, if we did have the money. But we have so many other critical needs such as making sure we have enough water pressure to put out fires in our community. That I don't think it's, again, I said this last time, it's not responsible to, to vote to do that when, again, I have no idea what's the return on our, on our investment. When will we recoup that hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll make some comments and I can address some of those, those issues. So just some, some, just some general other benefits. Residents will get their bills quicker. They should get their bills about three days quicker because of the fact that we eliminate two days of drive by reading plus a day of data aggregation. So that, that's all gone automatically essentially by the click of a button. I know for me personally, that would help because I know there's times where by the time I get my bill, I can't schedule a, a payment from my bank and I actually have to come into the. The city to, to, to pay. So that gives people three more days, which means we'll get money quicker, which improves cash flow. Will also improve cash flow because, as Sue mentioned. This gives us the ability to pinpoint those people who are getting estimated reads and we can fix that and then that. Means that we get the cash that we're supposed to be getting from those people instead of, I mean, we, we've, we've all talked about. On council before where there have been people who have gone for a year without paying their, an actual bill. And by the time we get, get an actual read, we find out that they owe us. I mean, what was the one that would owe us something, three thousand dollars or more? So that's all money that we should have in-house that we don't, so it'll improve cash flow. It gives the DPW twenty four more days to work on all the other problems that the city has because the DPW is not using their time to. You know, drive around the city doing reads anymore because again, that's all done at the push of a button. As far as the question on, you know, the, the, you know, Karen said she wanted to be asked, hey, look at those, those two incidents, that's, that's the, that's the exact issue. People have to, there has to be a resource to go in in our existing system and just start randomly looking at different customers, whereas the software does it all for you. And we'll just, at the click of a button, we'll say, hey, we've got high usage here, that kind of thing. In terms of return on investment, that is in the recommendation. The numbers are there. It eliminates drive by reads, so that saves twenty four days of DPW time, which equates to about eleven thousand dollars a year. It eliminates twelve days of data aggregation time for the water department, which works out to about another three thousand dollars per year. Vehicle, fuel, insurance, maintenance, that's about another fifteen hundred. And then depending on, you know. Taking the assumption out, the, the initial estimate was customer service, we would save about twelve thousand dollars. But a lot of that had to do with the fact that. The customers would be able to get onto the portal and answer a lot of their questions themselves. So that's probably cut in about half because you'll still get a big benefit of being able to. Address customer needs much quicker using the, the tools that are provided by this software. So in, in total, we're looking somewhere between about seventeen to twenty seven thousand dollars a year in savings.
Where are those numbers?
I just gave them a few.
It was in the infrastructure study group recommendation.
Yeah, it was in the recommendation. Those are the numbers. I just gave about twelve thousand dollars for drive by reads. About three thousand dollars for elimination of data aggregation, about fifteen hundred dollars, and that's probably a little bit light on that estimate. But for vehicle fuel, for driving around, insurance maintenance. And somewhere between, you know, six to ten, six to twelve thousand dollars for improved customer service, quicker customer service. So again, that, that puts us at somewhere between seventeen and twenty seven thousand dollars. Those are the numbers that were quoted in the recommendation. So in five, six, seven years, this, this will pay for itself. What else was there? There was something else I wanted to address too. Cash flow, resident issues. Yeah, well, it's, that's, that's plenty.
Well, again, those things are, we are aware of those things. We're aware of the estimated bills and there's no follow up on anything. So that's, you know, that's the issue. And again, it's lost over a million dollars. And if it was the high school, that should have been able to be detected by the, the major drop in revenue even coming in.
But that was before the meter.
Yeah.
That loss of, there was no way to track that that was at the school. We, we couldn't determine that. I don't know how you found that in the bills because.
Well, because they weren't getting any water and they should have been getting some. They weren't being billed for anything on one of the meters. So.
Any other discussion?
Well, I was just going to say, if it was the, the meter that was right behind where the leak was at, that meter was supposed to be off and not running at all because it went to the athletic field. That was not being used. So if you were looking at that one thinking that they're not getting any revenue from that, we shouldn't have them, but.
When was the athletic field not being used?
It hasn't been used. They switched it to turf, not grass, so it was not being watered anymore out there.
But they still have a bathroom. They hit, they still hit.
That's on a separate line. It's not on the, the sprinkler system, whatever that may have been out there for that system. So if that was the meter for that, that's why that would have shown zero and because the leak was before the water main, it would not have picked that up. The good news is it has been picked up. It has been fixed and our water loss were down to three percent, five percent a month.
Right, but the bad news is we've lost one point three million dollars because it wasn't looked into. So again, it's lack of follow up around here. It's lack of, of these things. So I'm concerned that who is going to be monitoring those.
That, you know, that was fixed, that was addressed. This is another way to help us with that pinpoint. Another thing about having these types of technology, that, that type of system is that. You can more or less pinpoint an area where the leak is going to be at. You can say, okay, we've got higher loss coming from this segmented area. Where is the leak coming from? And you can pinpoint in on it and start investigating when it's the entire system other than somebody and, and we just have been so short staffed. And I know you don't agree with that, but we have been so short staffed, there hasn't been somebody that could sit and go through line by line by line. Address by address by address to try to figure out where those higher weeds are at. So this is something that benefits the entire city. It benefits the community because they can call in immediately and say, hey, what's going on with my water? We can give them a near real time read on things that are going on. And it, it's a benefit.
And again, I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, we spent two years looking for the water loss. And we were focusing in on the entire city, you know, where in this large city are we, are we losing water? That's a big city. There's a lot of equipment. There's thirty some odd miles of mains. There's several hundred gate valves, you know, there's any place we could have been losing the water, but had we had a system like this, we could have narrowed it down to a geographic area and then began to focus in there. The system will provide us a, a infinite amount more data than we have now to do all sorts of, of research, follow up, tracking and so forth.
Covering up commercial too.
Yeah.
Covering up, okay.
Question. Do you know if the entire staff will be trained on software or cool up and be trained on software?
Initially, because we do not have somebody in the position to do utility billing at the moment. We, we do have Jenerdeus coming up here soon. Pam will be trained on it. I will be trained on it and I believe Jessica will be trained on it. And then it will be something that. It's better to have just a few people that are doing the actual, you know, one person that is really doing the billing and it's their system to, to monitor. But because Pam and I will be trained on that, we will have that oversight and ability to go in. To pull information and Jessica as well as the deputy director for right now.
So, so like if somebody came to the front desk. Would it make sense for, like, Jack to learn to know how to get into the software or?
I think it depends on the usability of it and how many licenses it requires us to have if we have to have it on more than one computer. But it's definitely something that we can. It's definitely something that we can look into.
Okay.
And, and I think anybody that can have, like, right now, we have utility billing software through BSNA. That we can pull up and look at and tell somebody, this is what your bill is, this is what your history has been. We just can't tell you if you've got a leak. Or you've had a high use until you get your bill and you see, hey, I went from using twelve units of water to fifty units of water. Whatever that may be, and maybe you filled your pool, maybe the kids left the hose on out the backyard. Maybe your water was borrowed by your neighbor and they washed their car, their house, their dogs, whatever. I'm being silly here, but. You know, just, we're not able to make that determination until the bill comes in. This would be something that could be seen. If you had a question to be able to come in. So it would make sense if we can do that to have as many people to have that. That ability to look at it. It's just if you have questions on it, it's harder to have everybody all trained.
Right.
But if we can do that, absolutely we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, basically every meter gets pinged every fourteen seconds.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Kenez.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is the communications plan.
Right. I have before you, or in the packet, was communications plan. I'm still working on verbiage for a written plan, but I wanted to have. Council focus a little bit more on this matrix that the city of Hudsonville put together and I sent the copy. I apologize. I did not print out the, the spreadsheet ahead of time, so I apologize. The print is kind of tiny. For you to look at, but I wanted each council member to take a look at this and kind of mark out what you felt was important. And hopefully you've done that coming into the meeting tonight to kind of give me some more feedback. And if you want to turn it in to me, you can do that and then we can discuss it more. At the next meeting, but I think, you know, going across the way that Hudsonville had it. They've listed out for their facilities, so I tried to follow the same format, listing out where our facilities are, our city services, public service announcement. Reminders of infrequent services, our crime alert if something happens, our public emergency if we have. Have to read it from here. A hazardous material spill or, you know, a car accident that blocks the road or, or something that happens that we need to get information out. Infrastructure, there's road construction, upcoming road work, a sewer backup. We kind of send this stuff out now on Facebook and try to get that out there, but this is. A dedicated way, you know, everybody would have this up in their office so that we know, okay, these are the things that have to happen. Bing, 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 we've got it out to this person, that person, out on this website, out on the Facebook page, out on, you know, wherever this may need to go. If there's severe weather, we would have that information to be able to put out there. And then it gives a directive, a communication, what it describes, describe what happened or will happen. The who is described, who is impacted and who will be addressing the issue. The where is, you can tell the location of the affected area. When is, when the event will or did happen and the length of the impact. The why is explained.
Actual.
Fact, the factual reason for the event. And the how is describe the next steps for action items. So it's very clear. On the process, it's just putting that language together. So if the, if a severe. Like we had the ice storm. Okay, this is the ice storm that happened. Here is the output that goes out to the community. Here are the steps that we're doing to reach out. Here are the utilities that we're reaching out to. Here is this process. If citizens need X, Y, or Z that we can address and help with, here is the response to that and getting that information how to everybody. It's not like in the moment trying to figure out, how do I say this? What have I got to say? It's, it's creating that language so that's, it's a template to just fill in the information and, and it's out there for everybody. So I would really encourage you, if you haven't done that, take a look at the layout unless you're very comfortable with the one that Hudsonville put together. There are a few things that don't. Like we don't have Tara Square here. You know, there are a few things that don't fit us, but that's why I tried to. Put that in over here and I. Put that in over here and I've got to figure out how to get to like little icons from the, the, the images from the, the stuff. But um it's just a great way to reach out. And then it tells also who sends out the information, not only who does it go to, but whose responsibility is it to get that information out?
When you do like um. For some, well, you have like a, a chain of command. Or like, you know how sometimes make, like say you're out the office, right? But then. Something like an emergency happens in here, will you have a chain of command of like, okay, who paused the shot and says, okay, we need to send this out?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that the spreadsheet that um you have included, it's, it's a good start. But I like the way that it is. I think in addition to the communication plan is also um figuring out our response time. Um, on uh calls, emails, um. The city uh sponsored uh Facebook page. Those kind of things that I would, I personally would like to see also in the communication plan, you know, where it's, it's more of um. I guess even has kind of like some matrix in it where if somebody sends you an email, then you know, it's twenty-four. Um, twenty-four hours, you know, business hours um to be responsible unless it's an emergency or something. That's urgent. And, you know, that's just an example. So we all can be on the same page of the X, but when, what the expectations are when communicating to um staff. Council and residents.
I need also bring back, I know we were looking at the, the text messaging plan. Is it a way we could bring that back to like a study session? To just go back over that?
Sure.
Yeah. Couple of questions, comments. Um. So do you think it would be a good idea for us to, maybe the five of us to just use this as a starting point and mark it up?
That's why I sent this to you. I'd love for you to do that. Um, if you can do it on the computer, great. If not. Do it on here if you want to write out, you know, if it's easier for you to just write or type it out. To these responses, here's where I think this is this level of urgency. This is who needs to receive it. However, you want to do that, um, you can use a colored pen and, and color coordinate kind of like what they've done here. Uh, with the little dots uh on the.
And you send me the Excel file.
Yeah, it's in, it's in your, your.
The actual.
I will send the actual.
And what's, how much, when, when do we wanna, what do we wanna set for a due date for us to get back to her on that?
At the next come, uh, next meeting.
On seventeen, okay. Um, so then the other question I have is, is so I think, I think this matrix is great because it outlines who's responsible for responding. To various things, where the response goes, uh, and, and priority and all that, all that. But I, I, I don't know if, if this was your plan to just have this or whether or not you were gonna do it. It's like, I mean, I think like you sent out Berkeley's, I think of two or three months ago. You sent us all an example of Berkeley's communication plan. So I mean, personally, I'd like to see something like more written out with this as a supporting document of the.
And that's what I said at the beginning. I'm still working on the.
Got it.
Part of it. This, this is just a great launch path for me to implement what we have written here and then put in response times and. To the outline.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and then the other comment I just wanted to make, I know I've made it to a couple of you and you just in casual conversations, but I, I, I think. Um, you know, underlying all of this is, is a CRM tool. Uh, because all of these. Interactions here, for lack of a better word, are all things that would need, or, or many of them, most of them are things that we would wanna capture. In a, in a CRM system. So regardless of, of what the final communication plan looks like, I think we need. To be on a parallel track, looking for some type of CRM to um, you know, to capture all of these interactions. So that they don't slip through the cracks and so that we get alerted if somebody hasn't been responded to and, and so forth. And I know that's a big underlying problem that we've had for decades here. So.
How do you follow back up with the Salesforce just news?
Yes, um, and I also have another company that uh we have a uh. The meeting set up with, um, so with Salesforce, um, the meeting that I was supposed to have. Um, the gal came down with pneumonia and then uh when I realized I hadn't heard from her in three weeks, I reached back out. And her emails would come back to me that that person was no longer available. So hopefully she's okay. Um, but uh it took a bit to be able to get connected with somebody else and then I got sick. Um, so we do have a meeting coming up with them as well.
When's the meeting for our Salesforce?
Um, it is uh next week. So the one for Invisio is this week.
So by the seventeenth, we'll have a.
We're two. Lot, or items on here, LED sign, we do not have that.
Yeah, that, that's what I said. Some of this.
Okay.
That us.
And then what are they referring to hand deliver? What would that mean?
Um, it could be if you have a water main break and you need to.
Something to the door. Okay.
Um, if you have information that you need to make sure it gets to a certain segment of the community. And you want to drop it off in person. You know, people make a lot to do that, so.
You know, like what we do for infrastructure, you know, when we're about to pour people's, drive, we work on people's driveway approaches, we go put door hangers out. So that would be an in-person kind of thing.
I'm not sure where they, they have associated with that.
Uh, sewer backup, water main break and boil water alert.
Yeah, those types of things, so.
And who's that caller? So who does that? Oh, D P W. Okay.
So um by the seventeenth, um. The council will review it and then you will have a um, a summary of what happened with Salesforce and Invisio.
Can we focus on the basics before we get into this whole complicated colors? Coded scheme. Um, we don't have an updated database with residents' names. We have bills for twenty-five hundred dollars that go to resident. We don't even know, we don't have a list of names. Um, people are still saying the phones aren't answered, no response to communications, residents aren't treated with respect. We don't fully utilize the systems we have such as the text messaging that we have, B S A online. Um, and our website is not user-friendly and the information isn't updated. So I would like to, I mean, this is pretty basic stuff and we're not doing that right. So before we start throwing in this whole list of all of these, all of these dots, um, I think we should focus on. You know.
Well, what's your suggestion of what we should do to start getting that?
Well, I suggested a CRM quite some time ago and I'm not talking about Salesforce. I mean, it, again, it doesn't have to be so complicated. Salesforce is a little um.
But that's what we've been kind of talking about, Karen, is that um, I know that it was a resident that asked about a communication plan a while ago. But it's also where it's kind of like we're building um, getting the bones for a communications plan to make sure that this is how we're flowing. And how the phones are gonna be answered more and how we are gonna have it where people are followed up on. You have to have a plan in place to make sure that it's followed and we, we can do better. However, I'm really open to you. Well, I mean, I'm really open, like give us an example of who the CRM tool instead of the Salesforce or. I mean, it's just, it's so easy to um say what we're not doing and we all are acknowledging that we all have areas that we can improve in. Um, but it is also really helpful if we can work together and give some suggestions on what we can do. If this is not working, what do you think we should do?
I brought this up quite some time ago. We need to have a database. We need to know who our residents are. We need to have personal interaction with our residents. It's, that makes everything so much easier. We're a very small community. As I said, we need to start with the database of who our residents are and then you see what the needs are as, as um. Uh, Don said about um having a town hall for residents on comm- on goal setting. I, I think we should see what a residence.
These are two separate things right now. So let's just stay on point right now.
Separate things, have a town hall.
I'm just saying, right now, this is two separate things because we're talking about a communications plan, a way to make sure that the residents are being helped. Are receiving um the, the uh callbacks that they need. Um, we are having a CRM tool that's going to be um investigated next week. If there is something else, like another, a database you might know about that.
There are multiple.
So that's what we've been asking. I know we've been.
We've been waiting for Salesforce.
Also, what you can do is be proactive and provide some names or companies. So I just want us to kind of move forward instead of kind of straining our wheels and what we're not doing. Let's start talking about what we can do to make things better because we all are very clear. And I'm sure the residents are very clear of where we lack at and where our improvements um are needed. And so we'll get to uh the whole thing about with our goal setting, um, cause that's the next thing. But for right now, for the communication plan. I think that, you know, let's all just dig our heels in and try to, like, if this is not working. Let's throw it out and let's do something different. But let's come to the table with some things that, hey, this is what I was thinking about. This is how my job. This is how I do it at, you know, wherever you work at. This, you know, just be able to kind of move forward.
Yeah, I think the, I think the way to move forward is, is to, you know, there, there's a lot of example communication plans out there and you've given us a couple. Is, is to, you know, start out with a draft and, you know, build, build up what's specific, you know, from that draft, you know, leverage off of it. To, to make one that's specific to our community. Um, I mean, similar to what we've done with other things, like the ethics ordinance, you know, we used other, other. Uh, communities examples and then we tailored it to, to our own needs. But I, it's, it's, it's very, right now, I think for all of us, it's somewhat conceptual. Because we don't have anything in front of us. So I think if we, if we had an example um and could begin to look at it, something a little bit more concrete. I think that might help us focus and, and narrow down to a, a, a more effective communication plan. My thought.
Anything else?
Again, if we don't know who our residents are.
Do we, Sue, do we not know who our residents?
No, we don't.
We do.
Okay.
Um, anything else?
If I could just.
Sure.
If you wanna hear from me. You know, my, my thoughts on this is a very difficult objective for something for Sue to work on. I mean, she's, you're asking her to produce something that satisfies. Five different individuals anticipated and product. So, so what Kelly's point is, is if, if. If council, I don't see anything wrong with council members coming back and saying, this is what I had envisioned when I say communications line. Cause it's such a, it's such a subjective type thing. So, you know, Jalen's is gonna be probably heavy on text messaging. And Karen's will probably be focused more on personal resident contact. Uh, you know, Bruce's may be more infrastructure oriented. I, I mean, those are the types of things that. If council provides and brings that information, Sue can then take that digested and put it into a, into, you know, a table, a written plan. It just makes her job a lot easier. Right now, I feel like she's trying to guess what satisfies everybody. Yes, there's obviously basic needs. That everyone is aware are lacking, but let's, you know, I, my two cents, if, if everybody could contribute a little bit of what they envisioned. This plan looks like. I think, I think it's gonna make Sue's job a lot easier. And I think overall, you'll be a lot more satisfied with the results because you'll have, you know. Your product will be in there. It'll be part of it.
Yeah, so I, I did want to. We, so we use a application at work. It's, it's called Pima. Um, it's Public Involvement Management Application. And, but it's mainly for uh departments of transportation. So I wanted to look into it and see. If possibly there's a small, a smaller entity that does the same thing and maybe we could look into that as well. Because basically it's, it builds, it allows you to build your database and then it allows people to ask you questions about different projects. So I think maybe I'll, I'll try to look into that a little bit more and see if that, it sounds like. Just trying to make, blend all of our ideas together, um, make it work.
It sounds like Taylor's gonna be heading up the communication. That's what it just sounded like. Any other discussion for that? Okay, moving on to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four goal setting.
Okay, more fun things. Um, so. I gave uh council. Uh, another copy of the previous rules that were done from the twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, administrations or council at that time, not administration, but council. And then a blank template and I'm sorry, didn't change the, the uh. Year upon that, so it should say twenty-one, twenty, or twenty-three, twenty-four up there on the top of that, but. I don't know, did anybody um fill out stuff that you believe to be important on that? Did you wanna look at any of the goals that were on the, the previous uh council? Or do you just wanna start from scratch and move forward with yours?
The previous one is, it, it's, it's a good starting point.
None of our have been done.
Well, uh.
And then my goal would be, you know, you guys have your conversation of what you believe to be important. And if you have written down anything on yours, then send it to me so that I can, uh, either you can bring it in and I'll make a copy of it. Or I'll make a copy and get it back to you, um, or you can email it to me. Um, but that way I can compose that and put that all together. And uh I kind of wanted to just focus on one section at a time. Um, so if we start out with um.
We just start at the top here and just maybe go down the line and see what's important to each of us. What was done with this the last time it was done?
This was done in twenty-one, twenty-two. It was not done last year because.
I said the last time I, I'm Kelly and Bruce would have been here. What, what did you guys? No, I wasn't.
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two. Yeah, you got, you got um elected in November twenty-one.
Twenty-one, right, and you did it before that.
No, we did it, remember, downstairs in the um, in the uh. We all did it together.
Hmm, I, I think you.
I don't think so, because why would we be doing it again now?
Because we didn't do it last year, but that would have been twenty-two, twenty-three. This is gonna be twenty-three, twenty-four. We didn't do it last year.
But I think last year would have been the first year participating.
Yeah, it's kind of like.
But this was not done in the beginning. We did this in the community room.
Yeah, we gotcha.
So, hey, um, so yes, we're starting at the top. We can go through it that way. Um. I think at first we were talking about um doing it during our um. Like study sessions, things like that. But I would agree that, that maybe we do it again. The way that we did it before, which was more of actual meeting for goal, goal setting. That way residents can be involved.
Okay.
Also in that.
Well, I guess one question that I would ask is, do you feel that there are any questions that are missing from this? Um, you know, that your values and goals are to be transparent, open and honest government. Dedication to service, fiscal responsibility, personal honesty and integrity, excellence, teamwork, a humane and diverse organization. Is there anything else you would add to that?
So I think that some of that could also be kind of uh, if we're gonna do it where it's. A controlled, open forum of goal setting, that we could also get some um input of what. Would be some goals that the residents, that's the one thing. Cause I mean, at this time, you know. Um, I can't remember exactly where all these goals came from, but I just think that, you know, listening, we hear you. That do it that way and we can come up with a um consensus. Cause one thing that I, I'm, and I'm thinking about with my own jobs. When it comes to us doing our goal setting, our strategic planning, one thing that we went through, which I think this might be that I did, and I think we did it here before too. Is, you know, you put some topics around and you let people go around and say what is, with a sticky note, to say what's the most important. Um, I think that if we have a word, it's more like a working meeting, um, where we're all being proactive and being, you know. Trying to see what this goes. I think that if we do it that way, I could talk to you more about how we did it.
Yep.
And how I just did it in this one retreat. Um, then we can have some solid.
We had a lot of success with the goal-setting um workshop that we did for the master plan. Remember.
Yeah, that was.
Uh, Planning Commission and Jill from Giffords Webster had kind of organized that. And, and you're absolutely right. I think that's probably where a lot of these things may have actually come from. May have actually come from, was from the master planning process.
Yeah.
But, you know, open it up, have it more of a work and giving a high level overview and then have residents and council members and other attendees. You know, at least initially identify the categories that they feel are priorities or should be priorities for council and then. Once those categories can kind of get, I think Jill compiled everything, but then we had a follow-up. Meeting, and then that's when we started to put more of the objectives into the categories, almost. And that part you can invite the public back to that as well, but then that's more really guided. Uh, town hall so that you're not just sticky notes all over the place, but. So maybe reach out to Jill, she'd be, like, probably be interested in helping.
There also are no performance measures listed on them, so I don't know how any of these things work.
So, we're not, I mean, it's not to tear this apart right now. This is about. This, do we want to do it now? Are these goals we want to do? Are these performance measures that we want to do? So this is kind of a working document, it's not to uh, you know, rip it apart at this point, so um. You'll schedule something for. Any other questions about the goal setting? Okay, uh, public comment. Anybody have anything to say? Want to talk about for three minutes?
Hey, good evening, Roger Lynn, San Jose. Uh, commend you on the communication plan that you guys are working on. Um, I'm not sure if the city currently has. Like some guidelines for the day-to-day. Questions that do come in. I know I have been a little frustrated. And I know some other residents have been frustrated. Goes to a black hole. I don't know if you can, you know, have a concept similar to what some other companies have, like progressive, you know, hey, you make a call and then. You know, before twelve o'clock, you're gonna get answered that day. If it's after twelve, you get answered the next day. And it just sort of seems like from a lot of people I've talked to. When they do call into, you know, city hall here. It gets sort of buried or the calls don't. Back very promptly, and I'm just, I'm not talking like a water main broken or anything major like that. I'm just talking day-to-day activities, day-to-day business, that somebody has a question. And it sort of falls like in the black hole. So I don't know, I mean, I know, Kelly, you brought something up on it, uh, Karen, you sort of, you know, touched bases on it. Uh, long-term communication plan, I commend you on that, like I said, with. Can get that need or move a little bit. I think, you know, for a small city, forty-five hundred, forty-eight hundred individuals, if somebody calls in. You know. Within twenty-four hours of the next business day, at least a return call, you may not have an answer for them, but maybe some direction. Anyways, my two cents, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
I'm running in San Diego. I wasn't here at the start of the discussion about Ferguson Law Works. Though I'm not sure what was discussed. My feeling is I looked into it, um. It's a huge company that owns so many different plumbing facilities. They own coalers, they own. They started out in Britain. I'm wondering. Has, has anybody gone and observed this being done in a city? They're the only ones that operate in Michigan, although they really don't operate in Michigan, so I'm just wondering if there. Has there been any observation of how this all works?
Well, um, I live in Owasso on weekends, Southfield during the week. Um, but we have that in Owasso and it works amazing. Um, the same system? Yes, same system for a community of fifteen thousand, so. And they have more towers that are up, obviously, but it's something that they can get up to the minute, you know, or. Right at that moment, reads, accurate reads. Um, and the information is able to give to them, so it's not something, of course, they did a water uh meter replacement. Program at the same time. This is just the technology side of that. Um, but as far as being able to assist customers when you have a call, um, or be able to detect. Spikes in water usage, uh, it's a program that is really well-run, and there are a lot of other communities that have that. Uh, same system in Michigan.
How is it overseeing, no, by?
So I'm gonna stop you right there, so just you want to let us know your questions, because this is a part of public comment where you just give your comment. There's not a dialogue going back and forth. So if you have some questions, just go ahead and just say this.
Concerned about the, the cost of it, when we have water hydrants that don't work and people are having to pay. A ton of money for sidewalks, uh. Uh, sidewalk repairs, it just seems like I don't understand the need for something like this. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you're online, if you raise your hand. You're not going to mayor and council comments. Um, the one thing I wanted to ask you, uh, city attorney, is. Did you happen to hear anything else from BT? Cause I didn't know whether or not I need to.
Uh, so with respect to the um generator, yeah, the, they've. Were on the same page. They, they agree that the city owns the property outback.
Okay.
And that the existing line that's been there is actually there.
Okay.
Um, so they're moving forward with the project. They just need their planner to do. His work, the survey. Uh, they actually were following, there was a conversation between the city's contractor and the VT representative, so I. I think everything's moving in the right direction.
Great.
We should have a generator sometime.
Very happy to hear that. Um, I think that that is really all that I, anyone else?
Oh, I just had one question. Don mentioned the town hall Thursday. That's up here in this room? Let's just.
Yes, it's up here in the meeting place.
So is it, it's going to be not necessarily town hall, but an opportunity to exchange. Uh, questions with the engineers who are working on the projects, or who's gonna be here?
Um, yes, um, Suzie Steck will be here, um, Scott Ringler will be here. And uh, I plan to be here as well. Uh, we'll be here to answer questions that you have about the projects that are um, gonna be taking place this year. Um, and this is for uh, the sidewalk uh, in the road, um. Paving project that will be taking place this year.
Anything else?
Yep. Um, Susan, you sent the report this afternoon. Where's the M dot I six ninety-six project?
Um, the six ninety-six project that is going on, um. Uh, that is coming through uh, from Loser to. The tender, um, and then uh. M dot also is working with the road commission. To replace the, the bridges between the service drives on Southfield Road. Um, so it's all of that encompassing. Project, um, we have a couple of meetings that we're trying to get scheduled. To have more information to give out to the community. Um, those are not scheduled for this year, um, but for twenty-four and. I forget when I said the other ones.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you were saying the six ninety-six project, I assume, was the one that's currently happening, but further down, it's just moving.
It's.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted, sorry.
It's gonna get worse for us.
And when I know the closures and all of that stuff is gonna be happening.
Will they address the crumbling wall on eleven Mile? Is that part of them? That project?
I don't know.
Which wall? Wait a minute.
Uh. South side.
Six ninety-six wall.
The wall, correct.
Some of it is.
There's, there's, yeah, the caps are crumbling and cracking. It's falling apart. I sent pictures. About a year ago. I don't know where they went, but I was told.
Yeah, I, I think that that is uh. That is M dot. On the. It's confusing because a portion, the city has to work with it, it's on the outer side.
Well, it's the inner.
It's the inner side, then.
It's the freeway.
The road commission or. M dot, depending on who takes ownership of that, and I don't, I don't.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Also, in your uh, in the email this afternoon, you sent this uh, map of the project, so it says water main trench repair scheduled. TBD. Um, I'm assuming that's San Diego and Glenwood, but I already received a letter to dear resident. Uh, that that work is gonna be started on Glenwood the week of April tenth. So is it TBD, is it the week of April ten?
And I'm just sharing the information that was given to me uh, out with. Citizens and putting it out on the um. On the, the divider downstairs so that when people come in, they can see that and are prepared. Um, but I can ask about that.
Is this Giffords Webster? This is this internal what?
Skiffles.
Okay. And then I wanted to follow up on the sidewalks. Mr. Perryman was here. And spoke at the last meeting and had concerns about some of the sidewalk blocks that were being um. Marked. He followed up with all of us with photos and emails, and I uh, walked with him a little bit um, last week. And um, I'm just wondering, who is making the determination on these sidewalk blocks? There are some that just have a, a thin crack in them that. You know, it's supposed to be two inches deep, two inches wide. There's nothing about length. Um, I just. I mean, he, there were a lot of examples of things that really. You know, they're sidewalks. It's not, uh, you know, your living room floor or something that needs to be perfect, um.
Did he let you know that I did respond to him?
I did as well.
Yeah, we responded to him, gave him all his answers. Did he, I mean, I'm not, I'm asking, did he let you know?
I know, but I'm wondering what the answers are. Who, who makes the, who made the decision? What is the appeal process for residents? Um, because again, some, some of the things that are marked are, I, I mean, our residents, you know, don't have. That kind of money to just be doing sidewalks and ditches and paying for the roads and their increased water bills and all that kind of stuff. I mean. There has to be careful thought put into, into these projects, so what, what, what um? Answers did you give me?
I'll send you the um. Email that he, uh, the response I gave.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a copy? And then also, um. The sidewalk replacement program marking key was put in place in twenty-twenty-one with the first year, but. Now all of a sudden we have a new one. That includes some different things, so I'm wondering why we don't have the same. Set of standards for all three years of this project. Why are there different standards for different sections of the city?
Do you want the answer now, or you wanted to research it? I just.
No, I. Probably doesn't have the answer anymore.
Did you get the question?
Yeah, I guess it's, they're not a different set of standards. They just probably got more detail than their, than their. Explanations, but.
That, that would be my assumption as well, um. I think in trying to be more proactive in answering questions or putting the information out on the website. Uh, so that people have the marking key there and they can see what those letters, what that information means, um, and. As every time when you do something, the goal is, the next time you do it, you look for ways to improve what you're doing and continually improve. The process, so um, the changes in the marking key.
But the marking key changed, but the ordinance and requirements really didn't, so I'm not.
Well, the ordinance and requirements are set in place. That's what the ordinance states. It's just the, the marking so that people. Think about and better see what is being marked and what the reason is for.
But it, but it doesn't line up with what that, what that ordinance is, so that's, that's the issue.
The two inch, uh, I'm sorry to cut in, but the two inch thing, that's a legal standard. That's, so that's a difference. Between maintaining the sidewalks and. I mean, ignoring small cracks, small cracks become big cracks, and ignoring those is exactly what got us in the situation that we're in right now. The, the city hasn't done a comprehensive, you're shaking your head, but. When was the last time the city did a comprehensive sidewalk?
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, so twenty years of small cracks has you in the situation you're in right now. So you can either continue to kick the can down the road like we've done with the water lines, and we all see where that has gotten us, or you can.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of can kicking over the last twenty, thirty, forty years, roads. Water mains. Other infrastructure, ditches, culverts, sidewalks. At some point, you have to rip the Band-Aid off and start doing the work. Because if you don't, it's only gonna get worse.
But there's no reason you have to wait ten years. If someone has a problem with a sidewalk, then it, it can be replaced.
There's nothing stopping from residents. All residents had the opportunity to, to make the improvements themselves.
Okay. Saw some pictures, but.
It, it's easy to say, why didn't we do this back then? The fact is, it didn't happen then, so now is, you know, we need to be. Purposeful on the replacements that are happening. Um, I know that there are areas where cracks are at, that it's, it's. More imperative to replace that sidewalk flag than if the crack is located in another area. It doesn't impact or affect. Um, being able to reverse that, and you really have to be able to look at how safe the sidewalks are for somebody who has. Uh, mobility challenges, whatever those mobility challenges are. It may not be something that affect either you or I or most people in this room. But anybody else that's out there, um, that has some kind of mobility issue, it would be something that. Could cause harm to them, you know, and, and the fact that we still have sidewalks out there that are more than sixty years old. Um, is, is just outrageous in my mind. Um, we're trying to be very proactive in addressing this and then installing or uh. Having a sidewalk replacement plan that is in place that we're addressing this. Every five years so that we're not having so many that are having to be done all at once.
Right, that's, I was saying, I mean, it seems like, I, I know it seems like we're being aggressive to, to, to some, but it's really, as Scott indicated, it's more an issue of the fact that we haven't done this in over twenty years. So residents have five, six, seven, eight flags, because a lot of decay happens over twenty years. It just takes a couple of years. One of the, as you said, one of those hairline cracks. That, you know, yeah, you can roll a marble over it now, but next winter. Or the winter after that, you're not gonna be.
We just got all this rain. It's gonna freeze tonight. What is that gonna do? Any, any water intrusion? The freeze off cycle in Michigan is horrendous on, on concrete.
Right. And then, so, so as you said, so the idea is, is to be proactive, get ourselves to a baseline. And then, you know, we have, we, you know, full-time code enforcement now who can, who can, you know, go out every few years. And that way, you know, in a few years, maybe you have one block, you know. You know, significantly fewer blocks, obviously, in three years, and so a resident may only have one block, or, or most residents have no blocks. But, you know, it, it keeps it, it keeps it so that residents aren't hit with a big bill, you know, in perpetuity. It's just gonna be small and.
We have new residents that have been hit with four, five thousand dollar bills.
But that's the responsibility. They own that house.
Well, welcome and.
They, they own that house. It's, that doesn't alleviate them of the responsibility. If they're, they were new or they've been here forty years, they'll have the same responsibility.
Any other questions? Or comments?
I do, but I'm, I'm not sure she's done.
Now you finished, Karen?
Okay, so easy ones first, um, and just to. Dress some of your comments, um, so, so Ferguson is not the only one who, who does this kind of system. They're the only ones who does this kind of system for the kinds of technology that we already have in, in our homes. So these kinds of systems are ubiquitous from other, other vendors, so there, there's a lot of, as Sue said, there's a lot of success. Uh, with these kinds of systems, you know, throughout the state, throughout the country. Um, so.
Yeah.
I read that they were sold.
Right.
Um, company.
Of our equipment, yeah. In Michigan for our equipment, for the kind of equipment that we have. So. Um. Alright, so, you know, I wasn't at the last, uh, the last council meeting, um. And so I was out of town, but I did watch it, and I have to say it was probably in my five, well, what am I now, six years is probably one of the most frustrating conver- uh. Meetings that I watched, uh, because there was a lot of information that was. Uh, factually incorrect, uh, there were facts that were twisted, there were things that were exaggerated. Um, and uh, I had a long discussion with, with Kelly uh, after that meeting, and, and she's asked me to correct the record on some of these things, so. Um. I, it's hopefully not be too long, but this is gonna take a few minutes. Um. So the first thing I want to talk about is fire readiness. Um, there were statements made at the last meeting that said we do not have enough pressure to put out fires. Resident lives are in danger. Uh, because we cannot put out fires, uh, our city is at risk, and those lines were repeated over and over again. Um, these statements are inflammatory. Uh, and irresponsible rhetoric, uh, that was used to bolster a position against, uh, the proposal that was on the table. Um, those statements are simply not true. Um, first of all, water pressure is not an issue in the city. We have adequate water pressure. What our issue is, is flow. There's a difference between pressure and flow. Those are two different things. They're not the same. Our issue is with flow. We have what, we have uh, water mains that are tubercalized, so what that means is if you've got a eight-inch main, for example. That's made out of metal, it leaches metal inward and creates stalactites and stalagmites, and over time, that pipe gets smaller. So effectively. So you're, after fifty years, your eight-inch pipe is now a six-inch pipe, so the flow is reduced, so less water can, can get through the pipe, or it's more difficult for the water to get through the pipe. The pressure is completely different thing. We have the pressure to fight fires, our flow. We have the pressure to fight fires. Our flow is our issue. Our flow is not ideal. We'd like our flow to be better, but it is adequate to put out fires. Um, and additionally, we know that we have an old system. And because we had an old system in the, in the unlikely event that something were ever to happen when we had a fire. We've arranged with Southfield to have a tanker that comes to every fire call. So that should there, should anything on, 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 sort of, on any unlikely event happen, we're covered and there is, there is a backup to that.
It's coming from Franklin.
Can we, um, be fair since you didn't interrupt you? Thank you.
So residents should sleep safe knowing that if, if there is a fire, we do have the ability to put out the fire, um, and, and. That's, that's okay. So that's it. The, the, the issue with our flow is one of. That requires water mains to be replaced, which is something that, that we are doing, which takes me to the next point. So at the meeting, uh. Uh, last week or was it two weeks ago? And then again, tonight, um, it was said, and this is a quote, since the two thousand and seventeen report from Gifford's Web, Webster. Only thirty seven hundred and fifty feet of water main have been replaced. That's a gross under exaggeration by four hundred percent. We've done twelve thousand and fifty six feet of water main replacements since two thousand seventeen, which included Saratoga, Lincoln, Santa Barbara. Roseland, Bloomfield, San Rosa, Wiltshire and Golden Gate. So the total of twelve thousand and fifty six, twelve thousand and fifty six feet. In the future, for this upcoming year, we just recently in the February meeting voted to add additional water main replacements to what we already had. So now we've got four thousand two hundred and twenty seven feet that's going to be replaced, uh, in the upcoming year. And what I find incredibly hypocritical. Is that the person who was making all of these statements was the only person to vote no to add additional water mains to the twenty twenty three project. So, um, that's fire, fire readiness and water mix.
I do vote no to add then.
The other, uh, thing that was talked about was the monthly surcharge to pay off the capital improvement bond. Um, and the, the statement that was made there was that we were told it was nine dollars and eighty one cents. And my last bill had a ten dollar and seventy cent, uh, charge. The info provided to us was not correct. And I don't see any product, any oversight over this, this, this process. So let's say basically. An intent to apply that there's something nefarious was going on. Uh, so let me talk a little bit about the origin of the surcharge to the, uh, water bill. So. Initially, the recommendation from the study group was for a five point two million dollar capital improvement bond. The council adopted that, that recommendation and it, the administration took over and started reviewing it. The administration, the city administration, um, felt that the. Bond was about two hundred thousand dollars short for let abate. So they came back to council and asked for an additional two hundred thousand dollars to which council agreed. And council then approved the bond for five point four million dollars. So the initial recommendation was five point two million. And to pay for that, that required a surcharge of nine dollars and eighty one cents. When it was up to five point four million and approved by council. That required a ten dollar and seventy cent surcharge. So this was no surprise. This was talked about at the meeting. It was talked about when the bond was, was approved. Further, um, it went on, there was a statement that said that the. Nine dollars and eighty one cents was a theoretical maximum that would never be reached and the surcharge would decrease. That's actually an accurate statement. That was what we, what we wrote in the recommendation. Uh, and that's what we had, had hoped for and planned on, but. As we know, when you implement a project, what you hope for and plan is not always what happens. So what happened there, the reason why. We actually started out at the, what was the theoretical maximum and we never lowered was because when the recommendation was written. The expectation was that the bond was gonna be issued in three issuances. So we would get, essentially you can think of them as, as, as a yearly loan. So we were gonna get a loan in year one. A loan in year two, a loan in year three. So in year one, we would only be paying back one loan. So it would be a third of the ten dollar and roughly fifty cents. So it would be three dollars and fifty cents. In year two, we would take another loan. So now we'd be at about a seven dollar surcharge. In year three, it'd be another three dollars and fifty cents. And so we'd be at a, a ten dollar and fifty cent. Surcharge. So the idea was that it was going to scale up. But alternatively, there was gonna be downward pressure on the, uh, surcharge because we had assumed that we were going to fix the water. Uh, loss issue in year one. And the issue that we felt was, was, uh, what we felt was the issue was that. Residents were using water and not getting billed for it. So we were losing revenue. So the idea was, is when we fixed that issue by replacing the meters, which we all know we didn't do. Um, the revenue would go up and we would have that increased revenue. We could use the capital component of that revenue to deflate. The surcharge. So in, in one, in one sense, it was gonna scale up, but there was gonna be a pressure downward. And so we, we felt when we wrote the recommendation. That we would never be at the theoretical maximum. But what happened was our bond agent told us that we should not. Do a three, a three issuance bond. We should take all the money at the beginning. So that puts us immediately right up at the ten dollar fifty cent mark. And then when, you know, we, when we finally did solve the water loss issue, which was actually unfortunately took two years, which everybody knows. The problem with that is that the water loss issue was before it ever got to a customer. So while we stopped the bleeding, it doesn't increase our revenue. So the revenue, there's no downward pressure on that rate. So that rate is gonna stay at about ten dollars and seventy cents. So that's how we got to that point. Um, also along that discussion, um, there was a statement that said, uh, that, you know, we, we didn't have to spend all the money in the bond. And to some extent, that, that statement is true. Had we taken a, a three tier, a three issuance bond. So if we, let's say we took out a six million dollar bond and we did it over three years. So in year one, we get two million, we do some work here, two, we get two million, we do some work. And now we realize, hey, we under, we're under budget. We got all the work done. We don't take that issuance and we don't have to pay it back. But what we did is we took all five point four million dollars at once. And so now we are on the hook to pay back that five point four million dollars over the next twenty years. So if we now decide to say, alright, we're under budget, you know, we've got five hundred thousand dollars left, um, let's not spend it. Okay, so the problem with that is, one, we're not allowed to collect interest on that money after three years. That's the law with the bond. So that money sits not collecting interest, but at the same time, that money is losing value to inflation. And we're paying interest on the fact that we took out that loan. So that's a horrible financial investment. Nobody would do that. So, um, you know, so we have, obviously we have an endless supply of projects that we need to do. And so that money is rightfully spent. Um, and which, which is what we did. So, um. The, uh. The next thing that was, was, was brought up repeatedly was, um, that the water technology was not in the recommendation, the water technology that we approved in the, in the meeting tonight. Um, so that definitely was part of the eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar estimate. Uh, with, with water, with water and water technology. This is something that Cheryl Mitchell and I, I wasn't here to say this, uh, two weeks ago, but we worked on this together. Um, she estimated about seven hundred and sixty thousand for the water meter and a hundred and twenty thousand. She was actually pretty accurate on that. Uh, for the surrounding, surrounding technology. And we listed that as a single line item in the, in the recommendation. Uh, so the notion at the last meeting was that, was because water technology was not specifically discussed. Uh, you know, it was only included as, as a aggregate line item that we shouldn't be doing that work. Well. Welcome to the rest of the, 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 the bond work. Look at the sanitary retention tank. We put five hundred thousand dollars as a line item. We knew all the granularity. We didn't talk about the granularity, granularity in the recommendation. So. Should we not replace the, uh, um, the grinder pump or the, um, you know, the odor, odor, odor repression system? Or the centrifugal pump because they weren't listed? No. I mean, this is something that we need to repair and, and upgrade. And likewise, you know, with the, the, the gate valves, we never talked about refurbishing gate valves. When we talked about replacing them, but what we found when the plan was actually implemented and the work was being done. Was that those gate valves could be, could be refurbished at six times less the cost, but should we, should we replace them at six times higher cost just because that's what the. That's what the recommendation said. No, that would be ridiculous. So I, I think, um, you know, it's, it's important for people to understand. That the recommendation is just that. It's a recommendation. It's not a granular plan. It's not a blueprint. The recommendation gets adopted by council. It gets turned over to the administration. The administration then implements and, and designs the solution and we as council approve it by approving the expenditures. Couple more here, sorry. Um, so the other thing that was said about, uh, the sidewalks were that, that, uh, and this was said, said by, actually by Karen. Um, that volunteers were supposed to have been used for the sidewalk marketing, which I thought was a good idea. So she was implying that we weren't following, you know, what was recommended. Um, the sidewalk recommendation was adopted in two thousand and nineteen and was designed to start in twenty twenty. And the first area that was gonna be done was the major square mile. And the reason why we were gonna do that square mile in twenty twenty was to get it out of the way. So there was no, uh. Interaction between the sidewalk replacement and the potential road work that was gonna be done in twenty twenty one. So the study group realized that sidewalk assessment for an entire square mile was gonna be a huge job. So because we didn't have a code enforcer at the time, we brainstormed ideas to alleviate the burden. Uh, on the city. We did, we came up, we, we came, we could, only idea that we came up with and we realized at the time that this was somewhat of a weak idea. Was to use resident volunteers, but we didn't think that was a good idea because, um, one, they're, they're, they're not independent. And they could have a, 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 either a financial or self-interest in, in marketing the sidewalk. So if I, if I'm at my buddy's house and he's got a questionable. You know, uh, sidewalk flag, I can say, oh, well, I'm not gonna do that here. If I'm somebody who I don't get along with, oh, let's, let's do that. It just didn't make sense because it was, was, uh. Takes away the independence. So, so what we actually wrote in the recommendation, we tempered, tempered that suggestion and said. The study group suggests, but ultimately leaves this decision to the city administrator that the majority of the sidewalk assessment work be completed by a group of trained volunteers. Um, so what happened then COVID hit, it was delayed till twenty twenty one. Um, and that was when the road project started. So we ended up scaling back the sidewalk program. So the burden wasn't as big on the city. Um, and the city administrator at the time agreed that that was not really a good idea to use, um, residents. So we used independent contractors. So to say that volunteers were supposed to be used, uh, was inaccurate. That was a, a suggestion and it was also a separate suggestion.
Independent contractors such as, you mean, close Webster? That's a really independent contractor when they're overseeing the work, but okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And then the, the last thing here, just real quick. Um, so despite being corrected at the March sixth meeting. That the, uh, capital improvement bond and, and road engineering fees, uh, engineering fees paid to Gifford's Webster were, were just over a million dollars. Uh, it was again stated at the March twentieth meeting that Gifford Webster was paid one point seven million dollars. That is factually inaccurate. It's a seventy percent exaggeration in an attempt to make Gifford's Webster and the city look bad. The actual amount was one, one, sorry. One million sixty eight thousand five hundred and seventy three dollars. Uh, Gifford's and Webster's teams were, as I, as I mentioned a month or so ago, were fourteen percent under budget. And about ten percent of the total cost of the project, which is well below the industry standard of fifteen to twenty five percent. I think it's important that all, all of us council members, you know, need, need to trust the administration and get your information directly from them. So in this case, the treasurer. Um, and not monthly distribution reports, which are not reliable for this kind of reporting. And I think that's all I got.
Okay, well, anything else?
Yes, yes. Um, I just wanna say I took the words out of all of your recommendations, all the things that I presented came directly out of the recommendations that were presented. From the infrastructure committee. The amount of water main that has been replaced was on a report that you gave November of twenty twenty two. And it was thirty seven hundred or thirty six hundred feet that had been replaced at that point. And there wasn't, uh, much, another sixteen hundred for the, for this year. So I again took that off of all the documentation that I have gone through. Gifford's Webster, um, I went through and added up all of the checks that we paid to them during that time and it was over one million dollars. And, um, I did just see though that twenty four thousand dollars of that was paid to Gifford's Webster for managing the bike path. Program, um, that was on top of the eighty thousand that we spent in grant money and, and general fund money. Gifford's Webster was paid twenty four thousand dollars to, to manage that. So you can take the twenty four thousand off of the, the figure that I gave.
Did you, did you take the, 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 I think it was three hundred and some odd thousand dollars for, that was, uh. A check that was supposed to go to the contractor that we thought was going through Gifford's, Gifford's Webster and then was taken out. That, the distribution reports don't reflect that. That's why you go through the treasurer who has the financial.
Well, gosh, I went and I filed, I filed the FOIA for the infrastructure and asked for all of that information. I said this last time, I, I never received it. So. I did it on my own. So if I missed a couple of things, I only went by what was presented to us, what we've approved as, as, as being paid for. So that was the best, best that I could do.
Here's an idea. Instead of arguing about whose facts are correct, how about we just get the information and, and accept it for what it is? Because clearly there's different interpretations here and, and arguing back and forth is not gonna, it's not gonna do anything for the residents. It's not gonna solve any problems. Somebody's wrong or both are wrong. So why not get the information and everybody can go over it line by line?
Um, we.
I don't know why we can't.
Did go.
This is, this is obviously a pretty sore, sensitive subject. So maybe we should. Spend a little bit of time in the study session and bring your information, bring your information, let's lay it on the table. And, and we'll sort through it. We'll figure it out.
I used his information. That's what I'm saying. I don't.
Maybe he made him.
Because this is.
But every month, this is ridiculous. Over and over, the same conversation, the same misstatement of information.
It is, it is. And it's also, we're just, we're not moving forward, you know, and I, and I hear what the residents are saying. And the fact is that things have to change, but they have to change. We have to work together. We have to try to figure out how we can. Change the way the communication plans are, change how we're gonna do the, the infrastructure next time. This is not helping. You know, it, it, it's just not. And I agree, we sit in the study sessions and nothing is said in the study sessions. And then it's when we come out here that, you know, that's when things are set like this. So I mean, I, I only hope. I only hope that we can go, move forward and that we can start doing some resolutions of some issues that we have. Um, the one thing that I find interesting, it, nevermind, I wouldn't say that hurt. Um. Uh, sorry, uh, yeah, any more comments? That's what I'll say.
Yeah, anyone would like copies of the documents that I've used, please reach out. I'm worth it, happy to share it.
If you want accurate copies, come back to the study session so we can all sit down together. So we had it, so we won't be going back and forth like that. So. Okay, it's just me right now. Okay, so we can finish this out. I just want us all to be on the same page. And what's happening is, is that you give your information, you give your information. I'm looking at the room and I'm like, this is team Bruce, this is team Karen. And it's getting so tiring right now. And all I wanna do is just get the facts out. And so everybody is on the same page. With accurate information. You might've gotten accurate information from the source that you got it from, and then he got his from. Whatever source he got it from. But let's just, if we sat down and say, hey, let's look line by line. Oh, okay. Uh, this doesn't work out. Something, it, it doesn't look right. Or maybe I was right. Maybe you come out where you are right. But this is not helping and I'm sorry. I take a motion, uh, Karen. Second.